First on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and it was sent out commissioners to you earlier. Is there a motion to adopt? There's a motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Post no, ayes have it. And so commissioners, before we get started, welcome back to our normal meeting place. But today, I'm proud to announce that we have a new microphone system. And so yay, we, I want to thank all of the Metro folks involved in getting it done. It's a big deal. We have to have a good microphone for the record. And so it's great to have a new microphone system. So with that, we do have, we're going to go slow today. It may be, it may take some time, but there's a little piece of paper in front of your seat here about the system. And so I can't turn, I can't turn on your microphone, but you have to, commissioners, you'll have to request. So Commissioner Clifton, let's practice. If you press the button, it should turn green. There we go. And commissioners, that means that, that Stuart is still not live, but I'll, I can, I have to turn his mic on. So I will turn it on, and it should turn red.
It's red.
Now you're on. And so also Commissioner Clifton, I can cut it off at any time.
Something you've waited for a long time.
I just did it. I'm just kidding, Commissioner. But seriously, you have to request. And then, and the good thing about the system is it puts you in order of the requests so that I'm not having to, so everything is fair and electronic, and we want to make sure that that's good. So hopefully, we won't have any issues with the microphones, but we'll go slow and go through that. So that's the main announcement that we have, that I have. But the main, main announcement that I have is actually kind of sad. It's very sad. Thank you, Commissioner. We're losing Councilwoman Gamble. And I say losing is that the council members are appointed for a two-year term on the Planning Commission. And so this is Council Lady Gamble's finishing her two-year term. And so we are all very, very sad. And personally, on behalf of the commissioners and anyone else that would like to speak, I would, I would encourage it. But I do, I do want to say, it's been an honor, Council Lady, to, to serve with you. I always, you're, you're always so professional. You've been a great liaison from the Planning Commission to the council members, which great communication amongst those two bodies is really important. You're very, very smart and have added a lot to the discussion. You've always upheld and helped the council members bring their cases to us. You've always been a voice of reason. And it's always, she brings a smile every time. Oh, we got, I've got a, okay, see, here we go. We're going live. Director, would you like to say a few words?
I love the system. I just want to acknowledge, we have planning staff at council during meetings, and so they get to see firsthand how much effort and time is required of this role, both to serve at council and then to come here and serve. And so I just want to acknowledge the personal time commitment and effort that this role takes. And it's so critical as an advisory body to council. We can, you know, only be as effective as, as our views are elevated. And we're grateful to you for all of your work. How do I make it stop now?
So you can turn it off. Perfect. See, we're getting really good. And so now we can recognize Commissioner Leslie.
I just want to say, I don't know if we started together or you a little bit. Do we start together? You behind me? But I always look to you. You're, you're very present here. When I look over to you, you're very knowledgeable. I feel comfortable. I look at the expressions on your face, and your, your knowledge, I mean, I just, it's just amazing. And so you've made this position for me very easy and comfortable. And I appreciate your demeanor and your professionalism and your kindness. And I'm going to miss you for real. Okay.
Thank you, Council Lady. So with that, commit, oh, yes, Council Lady Gamble, will you recognize?
Thank you, Chair. And before I start crying, thank all of you. It has been my honor to serve with you. It has been a great pleasure. I have really enjoyed it. This, this day is bittersweet because I am going to miss you all, although I'm going, I'm looking forward to dedicating more time to my professional business and, and other things. But this has been a great experience, and I just appreciate my colleagues in the council elected me to this position and allowing me to fulfill it the way that I have. And it has been a great joy working with all of you, and I'll miss you.
We will totally miss you. So we do have a plaque, though, for you. And so commissioners, I want to give this to the Council Lady, but then I want to get a picture with all of us. So if we, we'll line up in the front here. That way, I know this is out of order, but it's important, and we need to do that. Okay. All right. And so that leads us to item C, which is the approval of the August 14, 2025 minutes. And those were sent out to you prior and posted. Is there a motion to approve? There's a motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Post no, ayes have it, and the minutes are adopted. Next is the recognition of the council members. And we do the council members as we see them come in. Councilman Taylor, do you want to, during the item? And I think that would be item number?
Eight.
Item number eight. We look forward to hearing from you, Councilman, during that time. All right. So next is item E, which is the items for deferral withdrawal. And I think Maddy's going to take us through that.
Thank you. Items for deferral or withdrawal, starting on page three of your agenda. Item number two, 2025 SP 009001, 1004 and 1104 Cass Street. Staff recommendation is to defer to the September 11 meeting. On page four of your agenda, item number three, 2025 SP 036001, 14768 Old Hickory Boulevard. Staff recommendation is to defer to the September 11 meeting. Item number four, 2024 S 139001, Shular Clarksville Highway. Staff recommendation is to defer to the September 11 meeting. Item number six, 2025 Z 061 PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the September 25 meeting. Item number seven, 2025 Z 064 PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the September 11 meeting. On page six of your agenda, item number 15, 2025 DTC 015001, 319 Peabody Street. Staff recommendation is to defer to the September 11 meeting. Item number 16, 2025 Z 069 PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. And that concludes our deferrals or withdrawals.
Thank you, Maddy. And so commissioners, and Maddy, make sure that this, these are the items for deferral, withdraw, and make sure this is correct. It's items number two, three, four, six, seven, 15, and 16. Is that correct? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, commissioners, you've heard the items for deferral withdrawal. Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Post no, ayes have it, and those items are deferred or withdrawn. Next is item F, which is the consent agenda. And go ahead, Maddy.
Items noted as tentatively on consent will be read aloud to determine if there is opposition present. If there is opposition present, the items will be heard by the Planning Commission in the order in which they are listed on the agenda. If no opposition is present, the item will be placed on the consent agenda. As notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a manner, unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. So starting on page three of the agenda, item number one, 2025 Z 007 TX 001. Is there anyone here in opposition of this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. On page four of your agenda, item number five, 2025 S 111001, Stephen Crawford subdivision. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. On page five of your agenda, item number 11, 2020 SP 016003, 6100 Robertson Avenue amendment. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Item number 12, 2025 SP 037001, Madera Chestnut Hill SP. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. On page six of your agenda, item number 13, 2025 S 073001, 923 Curry Road. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Item number 14, 2025 S 124001, Reserve Parcel of Roy's Heights. Is there anyone here in opposition of this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Item number 17, 2025 Z 071 PR 001. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Item number 18, 2025 Z 073 PR 001. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the agenda to be heard. On page seven of your agenda, item number 19, 2025 Z 074 PR 001. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. I'm now going to read through all of the items on the consent agenda with their full captions as legal information. As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. Starting on page three of the agenda, item number one, 2025 Z 007 TX 001. Title 17, violation notifications. This is a request to amend Metropolitan Code of Law Section 17.40.600 to provide that notices of violation are not required for subsequent violations of the same offense. Staff recommendation is to approve. On page four of your agenda, item number five, 2025 S 111001, Stephen Crawford subdivision. This is a request for final plat approval to create one lot on a portion of properties located at 3250 Freeman Hollow Road and Freeman Hollow Road unnumbered. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions, including variances to Section 4-2.5 of the Metropolitan Subdivision Regulations. On page five of your agenda, item number 11, 2020 SP 016003, 6100 Robertson Avenue amendment. This is a request to amend a portion of a specific plan on property located at 6100 Robertson Avenue to permit additional non-residential uses. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 12, 2025 SP 037001, Madera Chestnut Hill SP. This is a request to rezone from R6, MULA, NS, and IWD to SP for various properties located south of Hart Street, along First Avenue, Second Avenue, and Andrew T. Whitmore Street to permit a mixed-use development. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. On page six of your agenda, item number 13, 2025 S 073001, 923 Curry Road. This is a request for a final plat approval to create two lots and to remove the reserve parcel status for properties located at 923 Curry Road. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions, including exceptions to Section 3-5.2. Item number 14, 2025 S 124001. This is the Reserve Parcel of Roy's Heights. This is a request for a final plat approval to remove the reserve parcel status and create one lot for property located at 4676 Clarksville Pike. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number 17, 2025 Z 071 PR 001. This is a request to rezone from R8 to MULA NS for property located at 5701 Robertson Avenue. Staff's recommendation is to approve. And on page seven of your agenda, item number 19, 2025 Z 074 PR 001. This is a request to rezone from RS 10 to R10 for property located at 908 Hospital Drive. Staff's recommendation is to approve. And under letter H, other business. Item number 23, to accept the director's report and approve administrative items.
Thank you. And so commissioners, and make sure I get these correct. And so the, these are the items that we're going to pass all at one time on the consent agenda, and those are items number one, five, 11, 12, 13, 14, 17, 19, and 23. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, commissioners, you've heard the items for approval. Under the consent agenda, is there a motion to adopt? So motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Post no, ayes have it, and those items are adopted. And commissioners, I did see another council member here. Council Lady Allen, would you like to speak now or during the? Okay. All right. All right. Always good to see you, Council Lady. All right. And so for everybody else, that leaves the following items to be considered tonight on public hearing, and those are items number eight, nine, 10, and 18. And so before we get started, some, some folks have, are professionals down here, and some, some have never come before the commission. And so we always tell everybody the process. We do the presentation from the, the staff team. We'll open the public hearing. The applicant gets 10 minutes, can save two minutes for rebuttal. Then, then we'll take everybody wishing to speak in support. And then after everyone speaks in support finished, then we'll take everyone speaking in opposition. And then the applicant will have the ability to do a rebuttal. Then the council person will close the public hearing, and then we'll discuss it amongst the commissioners. And so everybody will have two minutes, and please state your name when you come up, and we appreciate everybody coming down. And so that leads us to our first item, which is item number eight. And I believe Dustin is going to take us through that. But hold on, hold on a second. I got, oh, Commissioner Henley is requesting to speak. Commissioner Henley, you recognize?
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate the recognition. Just wanted to note for the board and the public, I'll be recusing from item number 10.
Yes.
Happy to state that again, item number 10, its presentation. But just wanted to let that be known.
Excellent. Thank you for the reminder, Commissioner. Thank you very much. All right. And so.
All right, Dustin Shane, Staff Planner. This is a text amendment related to compatible commercial development. So this is a new overlay district proposed by Councilmember Taylor that excludes certain uses and adds conditions to several automobile and nightlife-related uses. Unlike most overlays you might be familiar with, these are, which are aesthetic-based, usually this is more use-based with the goal to have operational and aesthetic compatibility between commercial uses and adjacent residential uses. Staff has reviewed the ordinance as received and is recommending a substitute that would prohibit, with conditions, the uses that are prohibited in, in the original bill and modify some of the proposed standards. So the bill as filed does prohibit several uses outright, including alternative financial services, automobile repair, beer and cigarette markets, car wash, and liquor sales. It also permits, with conditions, which include hours of operation, outdoor activity, fencing, buffering, how service areas are oriented, certain other uses such as clubs, bars and nightclubs, automobile service and convenience use, automobile convenience. And then it, some of these uses are prohibited outright when they're adjacent to residentially zoned properties, automobile convenience and service, bar nightclub and club. So our proposed substitute limits application of the overlay to a max of 50 acres and only along collectors and local streets. It shifts the strategy from categorical prohibition to more context-sensitive regulation. For those, those prohibited uses, it changes to a half-mile spacing distance requirement between them. And we'll point out that this spacing standard is twice the, the distance separation requirement for these types of uses that is, that are, is elsewhere in the code now. So this would prevent over-concentration of these uses while still allowing them along corridors. Similarly, it wouldn't prohibit these uses adjacent to residential, but instead would, would introduce enhanced screening and distance requirements. So the goal of the substitute is to make kind of a more fine-tuned tool to address when commercial, neighborhood, commercial centers are, are adjacent to residential areas. And we're trying to do that through reducing over-concentration rather than outright elimination. Because Nashville Next does identify our corridors as the place where we want a lot of these types of services to be. Since we published the staff report, we have received additional comments from the council member concerning tweaks and changes to the substitute. Our plan is to use the deferral period to evaluate these and any input from commission to see what changes need to be made. Our recommendation is, is to disapprove as filed and approve with a substitute. The rules and procedures require, or require a two-meeting, one-month deferral to September 25. And the update, they all provide an update since the update. Our original understanding was, was more that this would be deferred at council from September to October to allow for that two-meeting deferral to take place so that, that the recommendation of the commission could get to the council before public hearing. Since we have had communication that that may not be the case, so the, the commission will have to decide how it wants to proceed if that's the case. So thank you.
Thank you, Dustin, and I appreciate it. And so we'll go ahead and open this item for public hearing, and the council member is the applicant. So Councilman, come on up. And we do have a new microphone system, which is exciting. But you can turn on, there we go. Perfect. Thank you, Councilman.
This one's, this is still the old system? Well, it's not my fault if it messes up. Can, before I start my time, Hannah Zeitlin, congratulations, you all. I was, I've been traveling like crazy over the last couple of years. Hannah, I didn't get a chance to do this when you were leaving. Thank you so much for the work that you've done with me and, and my colleagues over the last six years. We really appreciate all that you do. I personally appreciate you. I still call you. So she's working on my clock sometimes, too, guys, just to let y'all know, because I have, I have questions. But Hannah, thank you so much for all that you've done. And to the Planning Department commissioners, you guys have a rock star with you. So thank you. Sorry, Hannah. Councilmember Gamble, thank you for your service on this board, on this commission, rather, and as the chair. It's not a secret, we've got a, a big conversation right now for her replacement. But it's going to be hard for anybody on this body that I serve with to replace you. So thank you for your service. All right. So we can start the clock. So, so I've been working on this for quite some time. You may remember, I came here for something else, and it didn't work out. And came here for something else, it didn't work out. And I think this, this may be the, the piece that, that works with this. So and I prepared, most of the time I kind of shoot from the hip, but I'm going to read. So as Nashville continues to grow, we're experiencing the push and pull between residential neighborhoods and entertainment and commercial districts. We've seen this play out with party wagons rolling through the neighborhood, short-term rentals and party houses next door to residents, and commercial businesses popping up right on the doorsteps of single-family homes. That's why I filed this bill. My, my goal is to provide neighborhoods with a tool to sustain their values and manage the encroachment of commercial activity while still encouraging businesses that residents have asked for. We can keep the heavier commercial uses along the major corridors, but not directly nestled inside our residential communities. The commercial compatibility overlay does just that. It's a way for communities to shape what works in the area. And importantly, this is not just theory. I've been working closely with Mr. Shane on this. I've received the substitute bill, and I believe that we can definitely mesh the two into something strong, workable, and ready for neighborhoods to use. Most importantly, I wanted to add, as we're moving forward through this, this, we had, we discussed this very briefly, but I don't believe that this should be able to be in the DTC. So thinking broader, that's one of the things they asked me to do, is think broader, so we're not kind of smothering businesses that we've mentioned here. So I want to highlight where I think we have an agreement here and where we can find some balance. So when we think about the prohibited uses, you heard about what the original bill does. The substitute shifts to spacing more, requiring half-mile separation. I think this makes sense for most of these uses. But there are two I still believe should be outright prohibited inside the overlay, beer and cigarette markets, as well as alternative financial organizations, companies. I think that that kind of adds to the, when we think about what neighborhoods value, I think that that can help. The other usages, as written in the substitute, I think I'm fine with that. The nightlife, so bar, nightclubs, clubs, et cetera. Also, people, event spaces that lease their, their space out for events that can turn into a nightclub in the neighborhood. I agree with that. One of the things I would like to see there is we had this, it was this outdoor component that I removed, so no outdoor activity, et cetera. Again, I think the substitute has a strong piece to allow outdoor to a certain time with a buffer from residential property. And I think keeping all those things, but buffering it from neighboring properties. So, because we might have a church next door, we might have, I mean, a number of restaurants that's very quiet. I mean, it could be a number of things that we have next door. So just kind of buffering that from all properties. Then automobile usages, I'm fine with, with, with the changes that we have been proposed in the substitute there. And then last piece is just kind of the scope of the overlay. I mentioned the, the DTC. This should not be applied in the DTC. Then we have an acreage. Well, before that, I also agree, we can keep this along collector and local streets. We can push these type of businesses, hopefully, outside of the neighborhoods with collector and locals to a arterial. And most of the time, a collector is going to run into an arterial, right? And so they're not, for the most part, leaving the community or leaving where the people are. They're just kind of moving down the street when they're looking for a new home or looking for their first home. Acreage is to cap it at 50 acres, and I was asking for about 20, 70, 75 acres to cap this when we are to apply it. So been working on this to, to find balance, and I think this brings balance for business. And I think it brings balance for the communities. People want walkability, people want these things, but they also want to go to bed at night. And just personal experience, I've, I've sat in the living room and listened to the wall's thump of music that are played at 2, 3 o'clock in the morning. And, which brings me to you, that's why I'm here. So, I don't have to be asked to come to someone's house at 2 o'clock in the morning again and do it. But also to find some ways to bring that value back to our residential neighborhoods while keeping light and limited commercial usage. So, that's what I have for now and it's not a council meeting, so I probably won't be back, but if I am, I'll share some more. Thank you.
Thank you councilman, we appreciate it. And we will reserve time for rebuttal if you need it. All right, anyone else, anyone wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, councilman, I don't think we need a rebuttal, we've heard everything, all right? Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. And so commissioners, council lady, you want to go first?
Thank you chair and thank you councilmember Taylor. Councilmember Taylor for bringing forth this, this text amendment change. I too have heard a lot of concern in, in neighborhoods that are right outside of the DTC with issues regarding noise and other, other issues that come with having a bar and nightclub and other services so close to residential. And I think this helps address that, so I agree with you there. I, I support the staff substitute which kind of fine tunes those things even further. My only question is, I think there was a question about the council members willingness to defer to the October meeting in order to meet within the requirements of our two meeting deferral. If you want to speak to that, that would be great.
Thank you. So, I'm a district council member and this is a countywide approach. I'll have to come back to you again to apply this once we figure out where we're going. And I'm, I'm, I've worked on a while, I'm running a little out, I'm going to a meeting after this, not a meeting, it's an event, but this will come up loudly. But there's specific areas that I do want to apply this. So, knowing that my time is somewhat limited, and I will like to tell Dustin, or excuse me, Mr. Shane, I'm sorry guys, and Mr. Laban, when we were thinking about this, so sometimes I could, you know, when I'm working with planning and other commissions where you've got meetings that are not necessarily set with hours, when I hear it, I'm like, oh, that's our meeting. So when I hear that this, if we can, this is, and I, I'm not sure, maybe Hannah can help us with, I'm joking Hannah. But, could we, so if we defer this, I think you guys have two meetings in September, if we defer this one meeting and/or two meetings, would it be possible to meet requirements to be on the October, the first meeting in October, council meeting agenda?
Go ahead Bob.
It's not red.
Okay. A two meeting deferral at the planning commission would allow the, this case to meet the planning commission rules for a two meeting deferral, and then you would still be on track to hold the public hearing in October. Right now, the public hearing at council is scheduled for the September, the first meeting in September. So, the, the conflict is if you keep it on the September public hearing, then the commission would either have to vote on it tonight to have a recommendation prior to the public hearing, or defer at one meeting and suspend the rules, the planning commission rules, deferring at one meeting to our September 11th meeting. That would allow enough time for the recommendation to be received at council prior to third reading if you kept it on the September public hearing. If you defer it to the October public hearing, then that gives us time to address some of the concerns that you brought up with us today and changes that you might consider, and it would meet the planning commission rules if you deferred the public hearing at council.
Perfect. Thank you. Big on protocol, I am. And I, I, I just think from a transparency state, we need to have a polished bill in front of the public before we, we move forward with a, with a public hearing. So if I can get to October, I'm hopeful to do so. I think we'll, we'll be fine with that, which then hopefully then, if all things go well, passes in October, so that would be helpful. And then we can work on another bill. Thanks.
Thank you councilman.
That's great. That's, that's all I needed to hear. I'm definitely on board with the council members willingness to defer the council public hearing to October so that we can meet our requirements and allow more time to, to clean up things. So with that, I support all recommendations. Thanks.
Thank you council lady and Commissioner Leslie. Oh, wait a second, hold on.
I won, I won the race.
You what? Yeah, yeah. Commissioner Leslie, you're next.
I'm a southern gentleman, I usually let ladies go first, but.
But not now?
It's a new system. It's not, it's not me.
This is completely fair, Commissioner Leslie, I'm sorry.
It's not me.
Commissioner Hanley, I'm sorry.
I'll do my best to be brief though, meet in the middle. Well, first, I wanted to say thank you to the council member. One for being committed to this because it's, it's something that as you mentioned, you've been working on for a while. And, and I just want to echo, I think, some of the things that your fellow council member shared. In another hat, in another world, I do a lot of community engagement. And one of the most oftentimes, one of the things that's brought up most often is that there is that fear and that resentment and that avoidance of wanting to have that impact and that encroachment of commercial activity in our residential communities. And I think it's really important that something like this occurs because it gives residents across all districts some comfort that there is some type of policy and procedure that is current and relevant to their complaints of today. So I wanted to say that. And I think too, another hat yet again, as a developer and working with developers as a consultant, they oftentimes want to figure out how to meet in the middle and satisfy the community and, and the guidance isn't as clear as it could be. And I think this is a way to make that guidance much more clear and again, meet the time, right? And to get, get to what, what can be done today. And so I think it's, I think it's helpful in two ways, I think it's helpful in many ways. So I wanted to compliment that. And then, you know, I had a similar question, so I just wanted to say again, thank you for being amenable to our, our rules, understanding that, you know, obviously council can always supersede those in ways. And so I appreciate that as well. But I just wanted to give that context, just knowing the intent and supportive of that. And so glad to see where we are today.
Thank you commissioner and Commissioner Leslie.
You know, I think this is going to take forever with you.
It's new commissioner.
I just wanted to say that, put that on the record. Well, I like the idea, the only question that, thank you Mr. Chair. How would you determine which acres it would be applied to, whether it'd be 50, whether 50 acres or 75 acres? And so how would that determination be made?
That's, that's something we want to kind of study over this deferral period and kind of look at the impact of what 50, what 70, 75, see what, what actually makes more sense.
Commissioner Smith.
Thank you chair. I want to say I'm very sympathetic to the aims of this. I think that's something we've heard before in, in, in meetings. On the other hand, we, in the last year or so, we've done a fair amount of effort and time in relaxing regulations and encouraging residential inside of commercial districts. I'm much more amenable to the, to the substitute bill, which has a little bit more of tighter regulation instead of outright prohibition. And I'm happy to look at it again after our deferral. And it sounds like I'm in the minority, so it won't really matter, but I'm, if it was today, it's not. I, I think I'd be voting no, just on that I don't love the idea of creating a new overlay that is purely just more restrictive than our, than our current zoning. That, that's, that's kind of where, where I am. I think a lot of this stuff could be done site by site. We do a lot of site restrictions for liquor stores or sex clubs, et cetera, when we, when we do zone changes and SPs. So anyway, that, that's, that's my two cents.
Thank you commissioner. Anyone else? Vice Chair, you're good at this, see, there we go. There, you're, you're live now.
Okay. I think I was going down the same path as Commissioner Smith, maybe just trying to clarify process a little bit more. So, like any other overlay, this is just an option that a neighborhood could come forward with, right? And say that we want to have this put in place over this number of acres. Is that right? I, I, I do fear that we're going to end up in a situation where we have a lot of tension between the residential and the commercial, you know, community. And that could be somewhat of a concern going forward. I don't know how, how, you know, what kind of outreach we've done. I mean, I agree, I'm, I'm definitely sensitive to some of these concerns, but I also, following along with what Commissioner Smith said, it, it seems like we do already have a fair amount of restrictions on some of these uses. Is that right? Like liquor stores and?
I'm going to let Dustin answer that specific question. I did want to add that one of the things that we have been thinking through since the bill got filed and, and councilmember Taylor has been a good partner in working with us. I think he knows what we were uncomfortable with the bill as first passed because we were, or as first piled, because we were concerned about some of the issues that you all are bringing up in regards to those tensions and the fact that these are commercial corridors. And, and so he has been a good partner in working with us to try to find a solution that we think balances those land uses. Some of the things that we have mentioned, or what Dustin had mentioned was saying that this couldn't be applied along arterials, which are places where we would expect the most intense and where we have a lot of mixed uses. And so we wouldn't want to sort of get into a situation where those mixed uses aren't possible because of restrictions. And so we've really tried to sort of take a balanced approach in working with the council members so that we can address some of those concerns. There are already some limitations and Dustin can probably speak to some of those as well.
Go ahead Dustin.
Yeah, automobile convenience, for example, in the code has quite a few, when it's permitted with conditions, has quite a few conditions. Gas pumps being a certain distance from the property line, outdoor loudspeakers being limited, where your dumpsters go, equipment rental spaces, that kind of thing. Bars and nightclubs have a, have a space cap on them now. So you could, some of the, some of the legislation seems to be modeled after some of the conditions that we're doing on, on some of these uses now, but it would be more, more strict than what's there.
I mean, I think I'm definitely, I'm sympathetic to this issue. I, I do want to make sure that we're not, and I think the idea that you're not doing it on arterial where it's the most heavily mixed use. But I do think, thinking through these tensions, because I could see this being brought forth by the residential community and having a lot of pushback from the businesses and that's just going to be a tough thing to navigate. You know, I mean, if the residents have, I don't know, I think that'll be tough for us to listen to this when they come in for, you know, to try to apply the overlay because both interests do have valid concerns.
Thank you Vice Chair. And Dustin, I have a question on commercial centers. If it's, are all the commercial centers on an arterial or would this apply? Could you just give us some background on the commercial centers and how this could be applied to it?
Yeah, currently, commercial centers along collectors are, are less large in extent and less frequent than the ones you see along arterials, but they do exist. And that's one thing that we kind of want to do a little deeper dive into is, is mapping where these are and where this might be applied.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I did, I did.
Oops, Bob? And then we'll get to.
I did want to point out one thing, that if an overlay were to be put on to a corridor, the existing businesses will be able to remain, they'd be grandfathered in, but it would affect new businesses that come in after the overlay were in place. So I did want to say that it's, it doesn't mean existing businesses have to move out.
Thank you. And council lady.
Thank you, thank you Chair and thank you Mr. Laban for that added context because that, that is one of the questions that I had. And, and also, I'll just put out there that as we are growing and continue to grow in Nashville, for example, with the East Bank, I know that there are some restrictions on type of uses that will be allowed in the East Bank development, for example, no funeral homes, no tire shops. And so to me, you know, when we look at equity and how we're doing things as far as how we're listening to communities and listening to the type of uses and services that impact quality of life and addressing that, I just would like to see us apply that in, in both ways. So I, I'll say that there is a precedent for this, that there, there are restrictions on various uses within the new East Bank development and this, in my opinion, kind of, kind of mirrors that.
Thank you council lady. Any other discussion? Seeing none, so I think our, so the good thing, commissioners I believe, is that the two meeting deferral is a very helpful, like we would get these text amendments and then we wouldn't have enough time to discuss them and work with the council members. And so I think the process feels right, Vice Chair. And so we appreciate the council member coming down and listening to our discussion and we really appreciate it. Like you said, it's very transparent. We appreciate you, your willingness to go along with the, the commission rules. And so commissioners, we'll need a motion for a two meeting deferral. Is there a motion? And there's a motion in a second? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye of two meeting deferral? No? Suppose no? Ayes have it and it's two meeting deferral. All right. Thank you councilman, we appreciate it very much. Next is item number nine. All right, so we're ready for the presentation and Dustin's going to take us through that again.
So this is a text amendment related to electric vehicle charging stations. Currently Title 17, the zoning code does not define or regulate EV charging stations. Title 12 of Metro Code, traffic and parking does mention EV infrastructure, but only within the automobile parking use. It references, references the infrastructure in parking spaces like you've probably seen around the county. It doesn't treat it as a standalone use. So a council bill was filed addressing charging infrastructure and staff has reviewed what we received. The amendment would add electric vehicle charging facility as a defined land use in Title 17. Introduce several definitions, what is an EV, a charging facility and the supply equipment. It would establish what zoning districts that they're allowed in with conditions, and then those conditions would include screening and lighting standards. So, the definition would limit the eligible vehicles to class two or smaller, so that would exclude heavy trucks and would make it intended for private car and light duty fleet charging. It would clearly define the uses, including what's excluded, so that would be car washes, auto repair and fueling stations, just to be clear on what, what would be allowed there. And it would define the zoning context that the use would be found in. It would be commercial, shopping center and industrial zoning districts. And these are usually along corridors and at employment, employment centers, which are high demand, high, high traffic areas. And then finally, it would give buffering and lighting provisions whenever this use is adjacent to residential areas to soften that transition. So our analysis is that this provides clarity and predictability for EV charging facilities as standalone uses in the zoning code. And it supports the Nashville Next goals of sustainable transportation infrastructure, planning for emerging technologies and then still ensuring compatibility with surrounding neighborhoods. with surrounding neighborhoods. So we recommend approval. And then also, respecting our two-meeting deferral per the rules and procedures. Also, the councilmember has indicated she will defer the council public hearing to October to allow for the recommendation from the commission to reach the council. So, thank you.
Thank you. And so we'll open this item for public hearing. And Council Lady Gamble, you are recognized.
Thank you, Chair. And I'll be brief. Thank you, staff, for pulling this together. As has been said, we currently don't have the electric vehicle charging station as a use in our zoning code. So this would add use and conditions for that. And as we know, as electric cars and vehicles are becoming more popular, I'd like to see that we're getting ahead of any issues by introducing this bill or legislation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council lady. And being the applicant, is anyone wishing to speak in support of the bill? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, rebuttal? I think we'll just, seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. And we have Commissioner Leslie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as I understand it, if I owned a daycare center and I wanted to put one of these stations beside my daycare center, I could do that? I don't have to, it doesn't...
If you were in one of these commercial or shopping center or industrial zones, you could put it in that zone. If there was a daycare next to you, which would probably be in our zoning, then you would have to do some pretty significant buffering and lighting standards.
So this would allow this use as a primary use. If you, I think what you said, could you have it as an accessory use to a daycare? I'm not sure if I heard you correctly. So this just allows it as a primary use. I think the zoning administrator already allows some of these charging stations as accessory uses in certain zoning districts. So it wouldn't affect that because they're already done today as an accessory. But I'm not sure if I heard your question exactly right. So I just wanted to make sure.
Whoops, hold on. There we go.
Let me try this. So for instance, how some large shopping centers have charging stations that are for the use of people that are visiting those centers? This is not that. This is where you would just have a parking lot, and it is just charging stations for a particular user. And so it is different than where individual businesses have a single charging station or even a few for the users of that. Does that make sense? So this establishes just sort of a completely different use, where the only use of the property is charging stations.
Thank you. And Commissioner Dundon?
Yeah, thank you. I think this is great. And it's, I think, like Commissioner Gamble said, getting ahead of the game is important in this area. I know a lot of people have range anxiety and plugging in anxiety. And so this will address that and directly reduce local air pollution for the community. And if we want to encourage walking, it's always nice to be breathing clean air outside. So I think this is great. And I just have a question. It's looking like we're defining it, but also stating which zoning districts it's used in. So both of those are addressed in this. Is that right? There doesn't need to be a separate step to determine which zoning districts that's part of this text amendment?
You're correct. It does both.
Okay, great. So I think I'm in favor of this and for the deferral.
All right. And so, oh, we have Vice Chair.
I think I need to clarify once more what Commissioner Leslie was asking. So, and what you said, you said. So when you go to Target and they have a bunch of Tesla chargers, that is, I mean, Tesla would tell you that's a designated use for Tesla or, you know, other... But you're saying that's an ancillary or accessory use? Is that clear in this?
So that, it doesn't, it sort of doesn't need to be made clear in this. So in that case, what you're talking about with Target or wherever else, if they have it, that's just a parking lot.
Okay.
It just happens to be a parking lot that has a charging station. But the use is retail and parking. It just happens to have a charging station.
Okay.
This would be a parking lot with a whole bunch of charging stations, where the only thing that is, you go there for is a charge. It's for fleet vehicles, it could be. There's no other reason to visit.
Other than, okay.
Other than charging. So for Target or whatever, those are still, that's already permitted? It doesn't, it's not really regulated by our zoning code because it's just a parking lot.
Okay.
But this is a completely different standalone principal use.
Okay. And it doesn't matter whether it is, like, you know, you're saying fleet use. If this was a private company that owned the lot that was just putting these charging stations in for their own fleet?
It could be that, right.
But would that have to, it would be subject to these same restrictions?
Yeah. If the sole purpose of the, if the sole purpose of the land use is charging stations, then this is the use.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt? Oh, I'm sorry. Vice Chair, you keep me straight. This is a text amendment, and it's a deferral for two meetings. And Shane said that, my fault. So, Mr. Shane said that, so...
I'll make a motion for a two-meeting deferral.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of two-meeting deferral, say aye? Opposed, no? Eyes have it, and it's deferred to meetings. Thank you, Mr. Shane. Appreciate it. All right. So that leads us to item number 10.
Just again noting...
Commissioner Hindley.
Just again noting my recusal on this item.
Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you, Commissioner Hindley. Sorry, I'm getting used, I'm getting better at the microphones. Okay. All right. So we are on item number 10, and we have Mr. Claxton doing the presentation.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Greg Claxton with the Planning Department. I'm here to present item 10, 2025Z 009TX 001. This is a recommendation from the Housing and Infrastructure Study to add two new zoning districts, Residential Neighborhood and Residential Limited, along with supplemental building type standards and frontage types to Chapter 1712, and incorporate references to RN and RL as needed throughout Title 17. Similar to the last two items, this is the first hearing on these items. So our recommendation will be to approve, but also to defer two meetings to September 25. For a little bit of background, I know we've briefed you on this project several times, so I'll try to keep this short. RS 2024 288. In that resolution, the Metro Council as Planning Department and a number of other metro departments to look at whether our current regulations and code provisions negatively affect housing supply, affordability, and equity to take a look at what housing types will help to deliver the housing needed to address Nashville's existing and long-term affordability needs, and whether existing and planned infrastructure are sufficient to accommodate the level of growth we anticipate over the next 10 years. This also builds on recommendations within Nashville Next. So I'm showing one example of a few different places where middle housing types are discussed. This is in action within the housing element to amend the zoning code to provide increased opportunities for housing types, such as accessory dwelling units, cottage developments, triplexes, quads, manor houses, and courtyard flats, and to consider the appropriateness of each housing type in rural, suburban, and urban settings to ensure that infill development is sensitive to its context. The proposal tonight is to add these two districts to the zoning code. That creates the option in the code that could then be applied to land through a rezoning process. But nothing in tonight's proposal would automatically change the zoning to any land in Nashville. With that said, I do want to provide a little bit of context for how we're thinking about the use of these through the Nashville Next Growth and Preservation Concept Map. As shown on here, the concept map recommends growing within a connected series of activity centers and transit corridors. And then also using what we've identified as transition and infill to provide a transition in the design and the form of structures from the density along the centers and corridors to the surrounding neighborhoods, and to use that transition as an opportunity for infill housing. Again, tonight's proposal isn't looking at the map, but we know it's been a common question and concern for members of the public, asking both, asking where these will be used and thinking both of, you know, kind of encouraging us to think narrowly around our corridors, but also some folks who want us to think a little bit more broadly. Our goal is to establish these in the code first before engaging the community on the mapping question so that the community has certainty about what we're talking about. And finally, throughout the Housing and Infrastructure Project, we've engaged, we've had a number of rounds of engagement, nine Council and Planning Commission presentations, two rounds of engagement across the county with 13 in-person workshops and two virtual workshops, 45 internal and external stakeholder meetings, 18 in-person and virtual office hours about housing and infrastructure in general. But then also, over the past three or four weeks, 12 in-person and virtual office hours specifically on these two new districts, as well as an online survey. That online survey is open until Sunday. At the end, for members of the public, I'll put up a QR code for anyone who is interested in taking that survey, either here or at home. In June, we briefed you on a range of recommendations for changes to the zoning text. Tonight is the first of these, and we're going to begin phasing in the next two in the coming months. So tonight, we have the new districts, RN and RL, starting possibly tomorrow, maybe early next week. We've got a balanced approach for thinking about the design and compatibility of RN and RS districts, as well as opportunities for DADUs. And then probably in October, we'll have recommendations for improved design of mixed-use multifamily and commercial districts, what we've talked with you all about as shifting to the alternative standards that are already in the code. We are working on an infrastructure assessment that will form the basis of any recommendations for further rezoning work. Once that report is out later this year, we'll begin further engagement on that. Okay. So the proposal for tonight is to add two new districts, design-based districts for middle housing, to the zoning code. The first is Residential Neighborhood, RN. Generally, this is house-scaled buildings, but with more flexibility in the arrangement and the number of units within the home. The second is Residential Limited, or RL, allowing those house-scale buildings, as well as some larger but still moderately-sized apartment buildings, such as courtyard flats, multiplexes, that kind of thing. I do want to note the reason for recommending these specific districts and the approach that we've taken because most of these forms can be built under one or more of our existing multifamily districts, the RM districts. However, those districts provide such a breadth of what could be done within them that they provide, our sense is that they provide a lot of uncertainty, which can be a limitation in allowing them along neighborhoods. And so these districts are specifically designed to give more certainty to community members and builders about what can be built in each district and to tailor these to the transitional areas in particular. I'm going to walk through the four main components that we've proposed to create these districts. The first is a set of district standards. These specify the building types that are allowed, the lot size requirements, building placement and form, parking placement, and creates a voluntary attainable housing incentive within the RL district. I'll also note that while we talk about these generally as two districts, RN and RL, we also have variants that are tailored to their context within here. So RN1 has more suburban standards. RN2 has more urban standards. And then similarly for RL, we have a suburban, urban, and a center set of standards. Next, we are proposing changes to the District Land Use Table. And these take two forms. One is adding the new districts themselves. You can see these in the green columns. The blue are there for reference for the current districts. And then in addition to the districts themselves, we're also proposing to add new residential uses for each of these new building types. And then for each of those, we include specification for where the building type standards are located within the code. So what is it that you need to build to if you're looking to build a house court within the RN district? And so that is the third set of standards we're proposing, which are the building type standards. So each of the building types shown here will have standards relating to the number of units, the size and massing maximums, frontage requirements, pedestrian and vehicle access, and open space requirements. And then the last piece are specifications for how frontages are provided. These are, frontages are required wherever a building faces a public street or wherever you have one or more buildings facing a common open space. And the goal there is to ensure that these buildings are kind of creating a welcoming, kind of transition from the public realm of the street or the open space to the private realm inside the home. Staff recommendation is to approve. As I mentioned earlier, this item needs to be deferred to the September 25, 2025 Planning Commission meeting per your rules and procedures following tonight's public hearing. And this is the QR code for any members of the public who would like to take the survey. Thank you.
Greg, always marketing. That's good. All right. Council lady recognized.
Thank you, Chair. And I just have to thank Greg Claxton and the staff again on all of the work that you all have done on this. This has been, I know we've been working on this at least a year, if not more than a year. And to see it finally to come to fruition and come before the commission and the public to really see the results of the Housing and Infrastructure Study. As you said, this recommendation comes directly out of the Housing and Infrastructure Study that took a deep dive and looked at what our housing needs are, what infrastructure we currently have to support those housing density and what infrastructure we need moving forward to support housing density. Just to say it out loud again, this is not removing any current zoning code that we have. This is not removing single-family zoning. We will still have single-family zoning in the zoning code. What this does is add two new zoning districts that will provide specification and conditions for new middle housing types that we currently don't have in the code. And to your point, Greg Claxton, earlier, when you mentioned how we do have zoning codes that allow more density, like our RM zoning, however, it's more broad. I mean, it could, there's no real certainty for neighbors as to what kind of housing can be built. This provides that certainty. This says this type of housing can be built on this type of zoning code. This says this type of housing can be built on this type of zoning code. The properties would have to be rezoned for these zoning codes to apply like we do now. This would not be any upzoning or entitlement for any particular property. And so I just, again, want to thank the staff for the work on this and look forward to more discussion on it as we go through this two-meeting deferral process, more education. I myself have been talking about these two new zoning districts, at least since June in my district, attending various neighborhood community meetings, explaining it, providing information in my newsletter, visiting and talking with various media outlets. And as we continue to do that and people continue to get more familiar and understand what is being proposed, I believe there'll be a lot of support for it. So with that, I just ask for support.
Thank you, council lady. And so commissioners, we'll open this item for public hearing, and we are the, the commission is the applicant. So I appreciate Greg bringing this before us. Is there anyone wishing to speak in support? Seeing none. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Seeing no one else willing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. And council lady, thank you for saying that. I too also want to say, thank you. This has been a long process. And I think, for me, the most amazing thing about this process, and you saw the commissioners, you saw the numbers that Greg posted, is that very transparent, very open public process. And you know, when it comes to planning in Nashville and the growth and winning over the trust of citizens, is allowing a lot of public input. And I think that's critical, especially in this time and age. And then also, it helps fix something that's needed, as the councilwoman said. So I want to say thank you to the staff, team. I know that a lot of folks have worked very hard on this, especially Mr. Claxton and his team. And so I look forward to hearing other discussion. Any other discussion? Commissioner Smith.
I just want to say thank you as well to Greg and the whole department and staff. I know this took a lot of time. I know it took a lot of effort, a lot of outreach, and I think it's, I mean, I'm very happy to support it. I think there was clear evidence of a problem or a need in the housing study, and I think this attacks that need. I mean, I think it's targeted, but taking a comprehensive, practical approach. And, you know, I'm happy, I know a lot of cities aren't moving in this direction, and I think they're going to fall behind. So I'm happy to support it.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Commissioner Dodd did.
Thanks. Yeah, I was actually going to ask to hear from Commissioner Smith and maybe just any other developer perspective to, it sounds like, and when I was reading to prepare for this, you can tell how much work has gone into this. So I think, I echo the thanks and all of the work that has gone into addressing the issues that we have all been sitting here, working hard to address, which is housing. It looks like it's going to incentivize through, really through clarity, the addition of a lot of homes of the types that we actually need. And so I guess that was what I was curious for, from the development perspective, or did the staff hear from developers that this would, in fact, help them with the clarity of what, I think you've answered that, but just to double check and make sure that I heard that correctly.
Yes, Commissioner. We've, through our public engagement, we've had a number of contacts with folks in the development community, and we're kind of asking them, you know, a couple of things. One is just, do these standards seem workable? And we've gotten some, I think, generally positive feedback. I think there's a few who have expressed an interest in something that's a little simpler. The standards are very specific, like when we're getting in and detailing the building types. I think generally, they've seen the logic of that, even if they, you know, we've had some express, you know, concern that they are overly prescriptive. But generally, what we've been trying to keep an ear out for is anything that makes it unworkable. And I don't, I don't believe we have anything like that now. You know, we've heard discussions about, you know, some of the building types offer a secondary wing. And well, you know, with this width, you know, of one room, then a hallway, and then another room, like, is that functional within the wing dimension? So it's like at that level that we're kind of listening for anything that's not workable. I don't think we have anything in that currently. So I think we've, we've tried to kind of engage, being mindful of both the sort of concerns about context, and what would be allowed, and creating that certainty, but also making sure we have functional viable districts.
Yeah, that's great. And thank you. And by extension, then residents will also have that clarity. I know I hear a lot of, I can't believe that they could put that up here, and now that this will hopefully alleviate some of those concerns. So thank you. This is great. I have supportive.
Thank you. Commissioner Leslie.
I just want to ask a question. Does this address building types such as tiny homes or manufactured housing? Or is that something that's not contemplated in this amendment?
Similar to, my, okay. Similar to many of our current zoning districts, very, very tiny homes are allowed. They are probably most viable with the house court option. The question is whether they're economically viable, I think in a lot of cases. But with the right property owner, I think with the house court option, I think a tiny home development would probably work. Manufactured housing, we don't get in, we don't address sort of the construction type in that, in that way.
So this does not prohibit manufactured housing from going into this zoning, this RN and so forth?
Who's that? So there are some very specific state law regulations around sort of classification of or consideration of manufactured housing as a type of construction as it relates to zoning. And essentially, manufactured housing is treated as any other single-family home from a state law perspective. There is some nuance to it in that if built before a certain date, then it may not be considered manufactured housing, and then there are some limitations. But state law is sort of specific in how it treats those. So those are, yeah, so they're already permitted through as just a single-family home.
Thank you. And vice chair.
So I'm just getting this clear in my head. I know I keep, I keep picturing a district, and like, this makes a lot of sense to me at a district level, you know, like a block or whatever. But we, people could come in, just like they do now, and get a single parcel rezoned for one of these two, right? But they can also still come in the way they do today and do the same single family, like, so we're not going to get rid of necessarily the things that are totally out of context in some neighborhoods, right?
It's, so we're proposing to create these as base zoning districts, which would then be available for property owners to request, similar to any other RN, RS, or RM zoning.
But the stuff that is getting developed today would still get, could still get developed today. I mean, anything that we're seeing. Under the existing, under, if they wanted to come in, under the existing zoning districts.
Yes, this would not affect their current entitlements under, under whatever zoning property owner has today, until, unless it were remapped.
Right.
It gives you an additional tool, perhaps not relying on an SP.
That's what I was thinking.
That's the first point. The second is, when Greg laid out sort of, this is a first step of several, there will be a point at which we evaluate mapping changes once we have some additional infrastructure. And so at that time, we may bring to you a recommendation for a block, but we would be working with the community and the council member a little more formally. Right now, we're just trying to create a condition or a tool in which that option would be available.
I think I got stuck when you were explaining this to me individually. I got stuck at that same point. But no, this makes sense, and I, and I think, you know, it will be challenging when we get to that point of thinking about new maps. But, I mean, I think that's, that's the exciting part and where we get some certainty and, you know, especially for communities to know they'll have a little bit more understanding of what, you know, how, if you're going to see an entire block redeveloped, okay, here's what you're likely to see.
Commissioner, I did, I did want to clarify. I was thinking sort of about tonight's action specifically when I said it doesn't have any effect on kind of how properties are currently zoned. As, just as a reminder, we have proposed, starting next month, to have some refinements to the RN RS districts themselves. That's separate from this decision. But in that case, we're looking at bringing the heights down a little bit in most RN RS districts, so that new construction is a little bit more compatible with existing neighborhoods, simplifying the rules for duplexes within our districts where one and two family are allowed. And then, as I mentioned, allowing detached accessory dwelling units throughout the USD.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith.
This is cart well in front of the horse. And it's possible we do this already. If this is successful and we start doing some zoning changes, either ad hoc or more from a 10,000-foot view, are we going to be recording or keeping data on? I'd love to know of the, you know, 500 or 50 parcels that got zoned, that got rezoned to RN, RL, how many of that took a manor plaque or courtyard versus, because I think that will, we'll see a lot of that on to which ones are truly unworkable by, you know, which ones aren't picked.
Commissioner, yes. We've proposed specifically revisiting kind of how these are working in two years, in 2028. And that's for a couple of things. One is just to sort of see, how are they working? What are we getting produced? What are the price points? Kind of helping to understand how these are working. But we're also kind of going to be looking for whether the standards need to be refined from three perspectives. What is not working? What's an obstacle for builders? Like, where are we, they running into something that we weren't expecting to be an obstacle? Second is from a neighbor perspective, where are the results producing really unexpected outcomes, since a lot of our goal has been increasing certainty? And then third, from a department perspective, as they work to implement and sort of integrate this with stormwater regulations or tree requirements or what have you, kind of are there sort of points that could be cleaned up and clarified there as well? So our goal, again, is to sort of increase certainty and get viable, useful homes built with these. And so we're planning to revisit within about two years.
Thank you, Greg. Any other discussion? We'll need a motion for, so this is a two-meeting deferral, and so is there a motion to, who wants to make, which commissioner wants to make a motion? Do your microphone. Commissioner Smith.
I move for a two-meeting deferral.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second, any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of two-meeting deferrals, say aye. Pose no. Ayes have it, and it's deferred to meetings. That leads us to our last public hearing item, which is item number 18. And commissioners, what makes this item different is I don't think we've ever had this staffer present yet. We won't be too hard on you. So, go ahead, Austin.
Okay, I'll go, okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Austin Chen, and I'm the planner for this case. Oh.
Okay, Austin, request to push the button again. Yep, perfect.
All right. All right, thanks, sir. Yeah. Good evening. My name is Austin. I'm the planner of this case, and this is item 18 on tonight's agenda. Our request is rezonate single-family residential RS10 to one and two-family residential R10. Staff recommendation is to approve. And the application, this application consists of one parcel totaling 1.72 acres, located at 510 Neely's Bend Road. The property has been zoned RS10 since 1982, previously zoned R10, and divided with a single-family home with two accessory structures on site. Surrounding uses are primarily single-family use with some two-families, and we are nearby zoning, including RS5 and part overlay with a small lot to the south. The side front Neely's Bend Road, and it is an arterial boulevard with bus stop direct adjacent to the site. And also, the subject property is within the T3 suburban neighborhood evolving T3 NE policy, which supports moderate density housing in the suburban form with expanding housing option and improved connectivity. Surrounding development is mostly single-family residential and with some duplex, and the larger lot size make this subject size suitable site for a moderate increase for the, for the density. And talking about the surrounding site, it is actually the largest site in the, in the community, and it's located along the arterial boulevard, and also the existing bus stop locating to the, to the north corner, making this site a suitable, suitable rezoning for the proposed zoning. So when we're considering the site's location along an arterial boulevard, and also the surrounding uses and the zoning designations, and its location within the T3 NE policy, which support R10 zoning, staff recommends approval of the subject proposed request. Thank you.
Good job, Austin. Thank you very much. And so commissioners, we'll open this item for public hearing. Is the applicant here? Come on up. Please state your name, and you'll have two minutes, and you can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal. And then, just so you know, that during this 10 minutes, all of the applicant's team needs to speak. So, thank you. All right. And the, and the timer is right there. Welcome. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Chi Chi DeAngelis. I live at 510 Neely's Bend Road. I would like to say thank you to the board for your time and service. I have lived at 510 Neely's Bend Road for 31 years. Shortly after moving there in 1994, I had the attic space of my garage converted into a studio for my daughter to live in. After she moved out, my other daughter moved in with her husband while they were building a home. This apartment was not built for the purpose of rental. Since then, I have allowed other people to live there who were in difficult situations. Approximately 15 years ago, I started needing help maintaining my home, which was built in 1946. This home is now 80 years old. So I offered the studio to Mr. Bruce Guttridge, so he could have a place to live and also help me maintain my property. He has been living there ever since. Bruce has been essential in helping me and my husband maintain our property and our home. I am 76 years old, and my husband is 79 years old, and my husband is suffering from stage four terminal cancer. Recently, my neighbor filed a complaint with the codes department that I have an illegal dwelling unit on the property, and I am illegally renting, which I am not and have not been renting. I thought that I was properly zoned to have an accessory dwelling when I had the attic space of my two-car garage finished out as a studio apartment in 1994. But I was told by the codes department that I was in violation of the code. So I began this process to get my home rezoned to R10, so that everything on my property is legally compliant, and Bruce can continue to live in the studio and help us with the property, making it possible for us to be able to stay there and to not have to downsize regarding my husband's health. There are many homes around me that have apartments, and there are seven duplexes within walking distance of my home. This request should cause zero impact in my neighborhood, as this studio in my garage has been there for over 30 years, and has had people living in there most of that time. My property is a little shy of two acres, which easily accommodates what is there, and in reaching out to my councilperson, Tanya Hancock, she was supportive of the rezoning and sees no reason why I should be denied. My request to rezone my property is simply so that I can keep my property intact as it is and as, as it has been for 31 years. I'm asking for your approval to rezone my property, so that my husband and I can continue living there with the help and support that we need to maintain this property to the standard that it is. Thank you for your time and attention to my request.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My name's Dan Guyer. I'm an attorney at Baker Donaldson Law Firm, and I represent Ms. DeAngelis. I don't have a whole lot to say here today. Mr. Chen did an excellent job in his, in his report and presentation tonight. I'll just echo that, you know, there's nothing new happening on this property. This garage has existed since Ms. DeAngelis bought the property, has been used as a dwelling unit for a long time. She's just seeking to bring it into compliance. She's not looking to redevelop. She's looking to stay, if anything. This is a, a community with, you know, a mixture of housing types. It is mostly single-family, but there are a few two-family homes, which I think really aligns well, as Mr. Chen pointed out, with the T3 transect under the Nashville Next Plan, which, which definitely supports a mixture of building types and this sort of moderate density development. I, I just wanted to say we're happy to answer any questions that the commission has, and want to thank everybody for your time. And then we'll reserve two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you. Appreciate you all coming down. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Seeing none. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up. You have two minutes, and please state your name for the record. Welcome.
My name is Matthew Smith. I live at 506 Neely's Bend. Before I get started, thank you all for what you do, and I appreciate this process, and I really appreciate your time. And also, best of luck to, I think, you. Best of luck. Best of luck on your next adventure. My wife is in medical. She couldn't be here this evening, but I'm here to represent the both of us. She's a fourth-generation Madisonian. We're both entrepreneurs. We're with the Madison Chamber. I've done a lot of work with the Secretary of State and various tourism departments around the state as well. I've been trying to figure out what to say here. It's my first time to one of these. I think you guys have got to be asking yourself if this is just a disagreement between two neighbors, and if I brought that in front of this council today. And I wanted to address that directly, because I had to ask myself the same question. And I have decided to fight this because I believe that this is bigger than me and it's bigger than them. This illegal apartment overlooks our yard. It was built above a garage. These permits were pulled in 1997, and they explicitly state that, you know, there's to be no residential use of this property when that building was built, as far as I can understand the permit history. This neighbor, I think you all read my letter, right? Okay. So I won't waste your time being redundant with that. Am I out of two minutes already?
Yeah, what we say is that the time flies when you're here at the plan of commission, and you can finish your thoughts, sir.
Look, the first zoning investigation that went to this property came back with there's no apartment there, and we have no evidence of it. There's been a lot of dishonesty here, and I think that doing this supports that dishonesty, enables it, and
Thank you.
and sets a dangerous precedent.
Thank you, sir.
So, thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, two-minute rebuttal.
Thank you. I just want to clarify real quick. I think there's a, a miscommunication, which, which makes sense, because I get confused when I look at Nashville E-permits too, and look at the permitting history for some places. But on, on this property, there are two detached garages. One of them was built around, or was built when you had the, when you first brought the property, and then she had it converted to a dwelling unit in 1994. The second one was built in 97. That is the permit to which the opposition person was speaking to, which did say no residential use, and it currently has no residential use. It is, it is used only as a garage with, you know, cars, tires, storage. So there, there was no sort of dishonesty with that 1997 permit. The, the only issue here is that the, you know, there was an electrical permit and a gas permit and a water permit pulled in 94 when this was converted, but not an actual building permit, which would have actually allowed this, this accessory dwelling unit to be grandfathered in under, because it was R10 at that time in 94. So, you know, Ms. DeAngelis is here not because she wants to get away with anything, but because she wants to bring her property into full compliance with the law once it was, it was pointed out to her that she had an issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And seeing the council members not here, so seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. And Vice Chair, do you want to go first?
I mean, this is a, this is tricky. My initial thought was that this was a codes issue, but I see now why it's not. You know, I think that, I basically think I agree with staff's recommendation. I think that, you know, if we were just looking at this from a, from a land use perspective, independent of what's happening for the, the individual parties that came tonight, I, I think I would say this makes sense. You know, this is an area where we have seen some additional upzoning in the last couple of, I mean, in the last six months or a year, we've seen some additional density going in on Neelis Bend. You know, I, I do not want to see Neelis Bend turned into a commercial corridor, but I don't think that, and I know that we're setting the precedent, not just for this individual homeowner that's there now, but once the property is rezoned, it does open up the, the possibility that, that something more dense will go in there. But that said, you can see from the area that there is a diversity of housing type that already exists in that area, so that would not necessarily be out of context. So I think I support staff's recommendation. I'm sorry for the personal issues in this, in this case, but I, I think from, from our perspective, this makes sense.
Commissioner Smith. Recognize.
You know, I'd already put myself in the queue before I realized I was just going to kind of say ditto. I, I'll, I'll second that. I mean, reading through this item, obviously you don't, except for the letter in opposition, you don't really get into what might have been at the root cause of this. However, what we're being asked to do is take a look at the request to rezone from RS10 to R10. And I think that is a, with, with the neighborhood context, with the character, with being in T3 neighborhood evolving, it, it seems like it makes sense. So the other stuff is probably important, but I think irrelevant probably to our charge here. And so I'm, I'm in support of staff's recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? Seeing none, oh, Commissioner Henley, you, see, you popped up after. Commissioner Henley.
Just keep you on your toes, Chair. Again, with, in accordance with my fellow commissioners here, I just think, again, at a higher level, I, I like how it was put that, you know, thinking about this, what's within our purview, and also just looking at this through the context of appropriateness for the policy is, is important. But I will say that it, I heard it mentioned in the remarks, setting of precedents, but I think it's also important to think about the precedents for people who have lived in communities for a long time. And we are getting ready to go through a process where we're talking about making a lot of modifications. And the things that a lot of people fear is that they've done nothing wrong, and then it becomes wrong. And so I think it's really important we think about that, because in this case, it seems as though everything was done appropriately during R10. Before I was here, before many of us were here, this body had approved a modification to the policy to go to RS, and now we have a homeowner and a property owner that now has a, a challenge. We won't call it anything other than that. So I, I do think it's important that we take that into context, and we think about it moving forward as well, some of those unintended consequences. I think all the work we're doing is great, and we should be doing it. But I think there's a thoughtfulness and impact to those who've made significant investments and have been in significant situations and why they made those investments. And, you know, we're going to make some changes, and so we probably need to prepare for what these exchanges look like when they come to us in the future as well.
Well said, Commissioner. Any other discussion? So we'll need a motion. Vice Chair, you have to. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Ayes have it, and staff's recommendation to adopt it. We are now on to, thank you, and I do want to say thank you for everybody coming down, both the neighbors. We, I, I want everybody to know that we take a lot of pride in trying to discuss and, and take every, everyone seriously. So thank you from both, both parties. All right, so we're on item H, which is other business and historic. Commissioner Smith?
No update this week. I, the city kept me from going to the meeting this month, and, but next month, I, I'll have one for you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Parks, Commissioner Henley.
No material updates. We do have our, our upcoming board meeting on the second, so the day after, maybe. So I'll make the same commitment as my fellow commissioner. I'll have an update for you next time we meet.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioner. Executive Committee report, we don't have anything other than, I don't think the Vice Chair and I have anything, other than just try to mark your calendars, because we're into the two meetings every month now. And I, I think both the Vice Chair and I, well, the entire commission, I do want to thank Commissioner Gamble, Council Lady Gamble, and we just, we're really going to miss you. So want to reiterate that, and I'm glad we could, could give you, give you a plaque and your services. You're going to save a lot of time. You'll get your Thursday back. Your Thursday's back. Direct, anything else, Vice Chair, before we, nope? Okay, so Directors' report.
So Greg Claxton presented the first of a series of important updates to you. And he's done an amazing job as his, as the team. I also want to acknowledge the interdisciplinary nature of the work we're doing right now. There are a number of folks in land development, Mr. Shane, Mr. Lehman, I'm sure others who have been supporting long-range planning and the effort. And so I think one of the strengths of the department is that we try to bring people of different divisions, backgrounds, et cetera, and you really need both to make it work. So hats off to you, because you're managing caseload and then also trying to figure out how to do additional work. So for the whole team, cheers. And nice job, Chairman, on the
Commissioner Leslie's watching me.
It's almost as if you're, yes. You're behind the curtain in Oz, telling us all what we can say or not. It's a little intimidating, Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Director. And the team's doing great. I, I think the team, we have more depth in the team and a, and a much bigger bench than we've had in a long time, and I just, I'm really proud of them, and I, I'm proud of the department, so. And I would argue we have one of the best departments in Metro, but I don't want to offend any of the other departments. The best, because the others are good. I mean, you know. Yeah, right. So, Council Lady, legislative update.
Really don't have any more to add, other than we heard a case tonight that will be coming before the council after the two-meeting deferral, and they, there are two more cases that will be coming before you, and I look forward to being present and seeing you all here when we present those cases. Just want to thank Chairman for all of your great leadership and encouragement. So appreciate you and the job that you're doing as, as the Chair of this commission. And again, just want to thank you all.
Thank you, Council Lady. That's very nice. So is there any other business? Seeing no other businesses, is there a motion to adjourn? Or adjourn?